Hey. Claude, you'll need, probably need to bottom left, under your video, make it so you can to be aligned through, just click on it to get your video going.
Claude, you probably need to bottom left, under your video, make it so you can to be aligned through and just click on it to get your video going.
We got Ryan coming in. As long as Ryan and Claude speak, we got a call.
Yeah, can you hear me, Steve?
I can hear you.
Awesome.
There's a net.
Jason, I don't have a flag today, so we can forego the pledge allegiance unless somebody else has one in their office.
I have a small one, will that work?
That's up to Jason.
Jason, do you want a small one?
That'll be fine if you want to lead us in it, that'd be great.
I don't, I don't have her on yet as a, her video.
You don't have my video?
No, you'll need to uncheck your video.
Uh, stop video.
I've got Claude on there twice now.
The host has disabled it.
I haven't.
Yeah, it says the host has disabled it, sorry, Steve.
I haven't just.
Okay.
Mine was doing that earlier.
Okay.
I'll pan us to start video. It's gotta be on your guys' end.
Okay. No worries, I swear I'm holding the flag, but I won't do that to you. But you can hear me just fine, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, let's forego the pledge, it was kind of a muddled last time, everybody trying to talk at the same time, we really couldn't hear everything very well.
It only lets one person be heard at a time.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure why Claude is having issues. I better close my door, I got people still in the office.
Okay.
Looks like we lost Ryan.
Might have lost me now.
Still here yet.
No, you're still on.
Okay, great.
Thought you was having an earthquake there.
Sorry about that. We're gonna be like you guys and move it the opposite way.
Now, if you do have the video, video option, we do need to have you show it.
Am I showing?
No. Heck, you're still just your name, same with Ryan and Claude.
I see Jason, nice and smooth. No, it's still not working, hmm.
Mine's saying that you've disabled it, so that's why it's not, not on.
Yeah, it's disabled here, but I haven't done it, yeah, it says start video with a red video camera, and I've clicked on that, and it says you cannot start your video because the host has disabled it.
And I get the same message.
I'm not even sure how to, because everybody else has gotten in there. Allow panelists to start video. They tried again.
Yep, there we go.
There we go.
There's a net.
There I am.
Have to have the magic touch, Steve.
Hi, Ryan.
Hello.
Still got Claude that's trying to. I guess you do have a call, Jason, so if you wanted to start. I don't know where Sam is, she told me, asked me if, just click on the link, and I said, yes, Jason felt will not be here today. He had a conflict. Meanwhile, he's not, what's on the agenda?
Okay, yeah, I think we'll go ahead and get started, and hopefully the others can join us while we're, while we're doing this, the work session, so of course, a little less official, I guess, so. I'd like to welcome everybody, this is the April 28th, 2020 planning commission meeting or work session, excuse me, at 6:00 PM, and we are doing our second video teleconference, or I guess would be called for this, so we've decided to forego the pledge because of the technical issues that we've got here. So we will move on to agenda item number one, which would be a declaration of conflict. Do any commissioners have a conflict that they need to declare?
No.
No.
Okay, there being none, move on to agenda item number two, which will be the approval of the April 14th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Do we have any changes need to be noted?
I thought I saw.
Okay, there being none, we'll look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Hold on, Jase, Claude, can you hear us? Raise your hand. I've unmuted everybody.
Yeah, great.
It's on there twice now.
Looks like two different views.
See if you can get one of them to. Claude, can you hear us? Still showing with no. I'm gonna try something here, I'm gonna mute everybody, then unmute everybody.
Okay.
Hey, can everybody still hear?
Yeah, you only wish you could do that to us in real life, Steve.
He's working on that.
Well, you know, you still have your first amendment rights to talk, aren't you? Claude's still trying to connect to audio. But.
Okay, should we go ahead and continue?
Yeah, we, we can, hopefully he can join us and hear us.
Okay. Hopefully we all have.
Everybody froze.
Steve, do we have a quorum without him participating?
Yeah, there's one, two, three, four, five, five of you plus Claude, so.
Okay, so let's move on to a gen item number three, which would be the discussion of the general plan update. Turn that over to Steve.
Hold on, let's see if we can get Claude's. Even get him on the phone.
Sure glad we're not trying to draft a quarterback.
Not as exciting, is it?
Not exactly.
Okay, I'm still confused on why they have the draft, just about find people and sign them, right in it?
Yeah.
Um, so the, the item, I don't think Claude's calling the right number.
Kind of boring.
It's more of, it's more of how do we want to proceed from here? I sent each of you a link, the reason why it's a link is because it, the document is so big that I can't email it. Um, so hopefully you guys can kind of start reading it and looking it over, but really is to what extent do we want to, you know, to do, I mean, beyond the meetings, you guys have to have the work, you know, the work sessions and public hearing.
Claude? Can you everybody hear him?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, well, we'll, we'll do, we'll. And I'm not sure what it is either, but we got you on here. So anyway, it's more of, I kind of gave you guys some suggestions on what I think we can do. I, I do think, once you guys talk about it a little bit and kind of get comfortable with it, then take it out to the public. You know, how many public open houses do we want to have? You know, those type of things, so it's really down to how you guys want to proceed.
I have a question, Steve. How, what's that timer on this? Do we have time to have one every other week, so we get two months, or two, just when one month, and we could do it by Zoom or YouTube, better participation?
Well, if we do open houses, I'd like to do them at a different day than regular meetings.
Okay.
So that we're still doing those meetings. Because the first one of the month, if an applicant has a site or something they want approved, we've, we've got to do it. So, you know, we could, you know, the fourth Tuesday of the month, we definitely could, could use as that. And then if there's a day during the week, you know, say the third, or second, or however, it's really up to you.
I think we need to have something that's other than the Tuesday time slot, because we need to have some different time slots, so that different people can, can attend it. I, you know, and I don't know whether we want to wait on at least one of them to be after we're all free from our quarantine.
Well, yeah, that's kind of hard.
Yeah.
Yes, and it happened to be September, October before we could.
Right.
But if that, if that's what's going to happen, I mean, I like May 26th as the target date to figure out kind of what we're going to do and, and get caught up to speed. But we don't know where we are going to be with the virus, and I certainly want to have to have Mr. Glassik present and all of us at the same meeting, instead of trying to do this roundabout on, on TV where I can only see half the people part of the time.
What, you can't see all of us? I've, I've got you all on a, a big screen TV next to my laptop.
You got, you got the high technology stuff, we've got.
No, I just borrowed one from my son and said I'm taking it to work so I can have it. But I mean, it's, it's really, if you guys kind of like how I put it, or if you want to make changes, we definitely will have Mark at one or two of your meetings, plus one, at least one, an open house. He kind of gives me that, you know, that comfortable feeling, I've kind of read the document, but not 100% familiar with the document.
It's a very long document, 145 pages?
As it should.
Yes, absolutely, I agree.
As it should, because again, we're trying to describe everything on, on of what it could, should be done, you know, parks, recs should have their own section and needs to be as big as it needs to be.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would, maybe as Commissioner Brand said, is, is May 26th, that gives us as commissioners four weeks to, to review it, go over it. Maybe we can have a, a meeting at that time with somebody presenting it, and then we can, at that time, decide as to.
Schedule.
Right, then we can schedule meetings at that point in time.
That's, that's fine, everybody okay with that, or something different on their mind?
Okay with that. One thing I was concerned about is how we're going to advertise this to the public and get heard out. Because a lot of it, you know, no matter, seems like, no matter what we do, we always get blamed for not getting the information out well enough, and aside from going door to door and knocking on doors, I don't know what kind of a budget we have, or the city council has to, I mean, I don't know if they want to do any kind of flyer type thing or whatnot.
Well, well, the good thing is if we planned it enough in advance, so say on the 26th of May, we come back, Mark does his presentation, you guys say, okay, end of June or beginning of July-ish, then I may have time, I got to find out when they sent out the.
Water bill?
For, for water bills. Something in that, throw something on Facebook, put something on the website, as long as it's far enough in, in advance. Even probably get it into the connector, yeah, magazine.
I'm, I'm sure that everybody received the virus pamphlet or circular from, from the city that was, you know, ever how large.
Was it in the phone or the water bill?
No, this is, this.
It was a separate, separate bill.
Through the mail, and you know, that, that gets attention, and we need something of that size and whatnot. So maybe we should explore how we're going to get to do that at least one, one time.
Yeah, because we, we talk about putting it in the connections and all those other things, and we've been blasted, meeting after meeting after meeting, despite those things being in, in the connect, connection magazine and posted online and social media and things like that, and I, I don't know how much there is that we can do as far as advertising, because we don't really have a budget to go out and advertise, but you know, there, there has been some disconnect there between what we're trying to do with the form-based code and things like that, and, and people clearly didn't get the message or didn't get what we were doing, and so that's what I want to be careful of here.
Yeah.
Is the way, we at least explore some of those other avenues and things like that, that maybe we haven't been able to target or hit before, so that, you know, this isn't a surprise to anybody. And we can invite all we want, people need to come and participate, that's, that's definitely there, but I want to try to hit some of those other areas so that we can reach out and make sure that the public is well aware of what we're doing.
Right, and again, as you mentioned, we can only you know, so much, rather, you know, sort of going to everybody's door and inviting them, you know, everybody gets a water bill, everybody gets the connection magazine. You can look and see how much it costs, the city send out.
I'm a lot more comfortable, I'm a lot more comfortable making an argument that says, we sent you the information in your water bill, because almost everybody gets one, and we sent a flyer to every residence in the city of Roy, you have notice, you don't have to do anything other than open your mail. In the story.
So.
Fair enough.
I know, I know Annette had her hand up.
Um, my hand was up just because I'm thinking, maybe we should have a conversation with Matt, so we, I understand where Taurus is coming from, but I think again, as Ryan said, his point, we have given notice twice now on, on the form-based code, and we're crucified pretty much over that one. So I think if we have a conversation with Matt and all the city council, whoever holds the purse strings, see if there isn't money to do that as well as the water bill, because there will be those people who will say, look, I didn't open my water bill, it's the same amount every month, or whatever. If we can touch our bases, you don't think so?
Well, I, I'll look, I don't know if we need to go to council for a budget item, because I'll just ask Matt if there is something, or try to find it, but I'll, I'll find out what the cost was to send that, just that letter itself to everybody.
I'm sure that the virus pamphlet was not in the budget, and they found money to send that out.
Yes.
Or it could even be a postcard that just.
Yes.
Notice, and then on the backside, when the meetings are, and something that's different, so I'll, I'll look into cost, and then.
Yeah.
We'll go from there, but I, I do think you're right, we, more we can do, a little easier to say, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, we, we did this, this, and this, and.
Right, postcards is a good idea too, because I think the, the price of postcards is cheaper than the.
Cheaper than the flyer.
Right.
So, yes, I like that.
Yeah, and the other, the other idea that I've kind of thought about a little bit on this, would it be possible to have a website with online comments available, where people would need to put in their name and address, we kind of know whether they're coming from Roy or from elsewhere, but is there the ability to have some online comments that, you know, could be taken into consideration as well, especially if we're in this quarantine kind of situation?
Mark with Landmark Design, when they first were starting, you could go on to our page, and it's still there. Where it says general plan update, you can click on it, it goes to their website, and at the beginning, they had a bunch of questions, pictures, so I, they could probably do that as well. It'd be same stuff that we were doing before, and we could just, okay, you know, have him pose the questions and get the, the responses, and then send it to us.
That'd be good, that way we can just add that information on to the postcard or whatnot, that they could do it online if they would like to, and.
Yeah, because already there to their, their portion of the.
Yeah.
It could make it easier for people that are unable to attend a meeting as well. Okay. Well, that's good, I like that. Will, will we talk about like updates to any of the draft stuff at the later time, or we're gonna talk about any of that tonight?
Drafts of what?
Uh, the draft, the actual draft of the, of the plan.
Tonight, I mean, you guys only, didn't have a very long to, to review, so I think tonight was more, my worry was just going over kind of a timeframe, how you guys want to approach it, have you guys kind of think how many meetings, you know, public open houses, notification, I think I got a good idea, put it out everywhere and anywhere, and find out cost, and you know, if, if postcards are half the price, maybe we can do two, if I can find the budget. You know?
Well, I, I think we need to have some kind of at least two open house type.
Yes.
venues, if, if not a third one.
I agree.
I haven't read, what, what is it, 145 pages, is that what you said?
It's about that, it's about that.
Okay, I haven't read 145 pages, I have no idea how many meetings we need, which is why I think the idea of the 26th is, is just perfect for us to get our hands around it and have a better idea of what we need to do, other than going, sure, we need two or three or five or one.
I read the whole thing, and I say four.
Well, I second that.
The issue, and I don't want to sound horrible, but it's, you know, beyond two or three, are you going to get new comments that aren't any different than what was before? And then how many times, you know, if we do one a month, that puts us, May, June, July, August.
Two months.
You know, I'm not saying four is a bad number, I just, in previous ones that I have done in, in other cities, it's two or three, and.
Oh, and that's true, if we have it on a website where they can have some open comments, I.
I like that covers it.
They can get the link, and then they can go to that site and, or email me their, their comments, you know? So, I think we have options, and I think you guys have some good ideas. Just talking it.
There were five of us, I don't want to be the one that's yelling over, um, so in that document, there were all those comments, where did they come from, and how did those get imported into there? There weren't any names attached to them, but they were very good comments, I really liked what people had to say.
Towards the back?
Yes.
Um, well, if you're, Mark and his team have already gone out to several different places and, and gotten comments from people. We did two high school classes at Roy High, where I think there's what, 60s or so students, and they went through kind of pictures and identified things they liked, didn't like, and made some. Um, we did have a booth at Roy Days.
Okay.
Where people could comment on some of the posters that they had of concepts that they were, you know, starting to formulate. I think they had two or three what they called living room discussions, where they reached out to a few families and had them invite some neighbors, and they sat down with them and discussed. So they, they've kind of reached out in some different ways to get comments, that's why I'm kind of thinking, you know, we've already got several different little meetings that have taken, to get the information we've got, these ones are more of, unless you guys have significant changes, is this is what we want to present, give us some ideas, you know, good, bad, or ugly, the document may change a little bit here and there, but not a lot. So. Again, we're, we're kind of on the tail end of, of discovery, and it's, you know, been written, so. Most of these meetings, again, are to present the ideas that are in there.
Well, I think we have some homework to do, Steve, and I will look for the 26th and find out what the virus is doing. But I don't think we ought to have the meeting until we can all get together and Mark can be present, because there's, there's so much, it's so much better to have interactivity face to face than it is.
Yes.
Right, but I just don't want to push it out to, to August.
If, if it has to, okay. I mean, when was the last time we updated the general plan, 2004?
2002.
Two, okay, well, if.
Eighteen years now.
For to take, make it happen, I think we could live with that. All right.
Any other thoughts?
Nope.
Claude, you're still trying to connect to audio.
Maybe you didn't work on it between now and then. All right, then, are we done?
That's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, well, we, we'll move on to item number four, which would be the commissioners' minutes, do any commissioners have anything off this topic that they'd like to discuss? It doesn't sound like we've got any.
I, I, it's not on Facebook, I noticed that there was some complaints about not being able to interact. not being able to interact with the council, you know, the council, the public interacting with the council there, last council meeting. I don't you know, I don't know how these Zoom meetings work with having other people join in.
I mean, they're difficult, but they the council did reach out quite a bit and email them if they had a question. Morgan then invited them to be attendee. But she had a list of those who wanted to talk. And then they would just go down the list of attendees and invite them to speak and then they could talk and then they'd get the next person. So there is ways of doing it. It is a little I guess is the best word to say. It's it's not like the, you know, regular meetings where they just go to the counter and say something and then sit down, but it it can work. So, you know, if we do have a public hearing, which I don't have anything for maze beating, public hearing wise. You know, I don't have to, haven't had to experience how to do that yet.
Okay.
But you know, it is, it is possible. It's just clunky.
Right, right.
Without without giving them complete rights to just speak whenever.
Yeah.
Right.
But you know, this, this works really well for what we need.
Well, that's, we do it for work. This is where I, this is my office right now. 20 hours a day.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the Air Force won't let us use Zoom anymore, so we we don't use it.
Yeah.
So unfortunate.
Yeah, they they've had people hack into it. Most of those are meetings, not webinars, so that's why ours is a webinar.
I heard they kind of fixed and fixed some of the issues, but the Air Force still feels security might be an issue talking about delicate matters.
Understandable.
Claude must have hung up. I dropped you? Oh.
All right, well, we can move on to agenda item number five, it looks like. Staff staff update. Steve, is there anything update for staff?
Uh, well, during the last city council meeting, they did in the work session, they did talk a bit about the form based code. A lot of the council persons expressed their concerns. So the mayor's kind of put together a small committee of myself and two council persons. I won't say their names yet because I don't know if mayor has contacted at least one of them.
I was just about to ask who they were.
Yeah. And then we'll go through it, take the things that are I could say this politically correct scary or of concern. And then bring it back as quickly as we can. So I've already started the process without those two yet because I took what their comments were and said, okay, you know, these sections won't be in it, so let's just take them out and but some of the scary stuff is still like hike the building and setbacks and landscaping and those types of things, which to me is the the very nature of the ordinance, but we'll we'll figure it out and bring it back as quick as we can. The mayor wants to get it going. But he also knows that the the budget needs to be discussed in the next two months. Has to be approved by end of June, so as fast as he wants this done, he also knows that the budget has to be done. So he's got those things to to look at, so. Other than that, I know the multi-family project there in Midland and 4000 South on the south there have now pulled four permits for the first four buildings. The school, Bridge Academy there on 48 and 35. If you haven't driven past there, you'll be surprised how quickly that's one. Let's see what else projects are.
What about the head start?
It starts moving along. But a few things, you know, they got the windows already in and bricked up. The same brick colors they told us it would be, but I'll get with the architect and then they do have the playground in the back already fenced in, so they're moving along on that.
What about the buffet? I went by there this week. It looks like they're doing something. Maybe it's open and they were working.
It's not open yet. They they had a
No, the the building was open. They they weren't social distancing, but there were people in there.
Yeah, I know they're they're remodeling it inside, so I I don't go in it because it's not my aspect to to review, so I don't know how many inspect they've had or.
Any timeline on it, Steve?
Huh?
We have a little timeline on that yet?
Not a clue.
Okay.
I know they're going from a retail store to a restaurant, so grease trap.
Some modifications.
Kitchen ovens and stuff needed to be put in.
Yeah.
So on the bright side, with the COVID, they, you know, could really finite detail it and get it fixed.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Unless anybody has questions, that's that's it.
Any questions from Steve?
No.
None.
Okay, well, and we'll go on to agenda item number six would be a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jinx.
So Kelly and Ashley. Ashley and Kelly, however. Ashby.
Kelly and Ashby.
You can you can come and hit me later.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are now adjourned.
A quick question, who?